Okay, Counselor Higgins, you can hear well, I hope?
Yes, I can.
Fantastic. Where is it?
Where's Dave?
Oh, hello, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, how are you?
How are we doing?
And others. Oh, yeah. Okay, uh, Madam Chair, go for it.
Very good. I'm gonna bring this regular town council meeting, um, Thursday, February twenty seventh to order. Can I have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Dumeay. Counselor Braggan.
Present.
Here, Danforth.
Here.
Counselor Dumeay.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Present via Zoom.
Counselor Macken.
Excused.
Counselor McGowan.
Here.
And Counselor Pelletier.
Here by Zoom.
Thank you.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
No, there is special presentations.
There are. So there are no adjustments to the agenda. I, uh, will seek approval of the minutes from their January twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting and our February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, um.
Go move.
Uh, motion made by Counselor, uh, Pelletier, seconded by Counselor McGowan, all those in favor of approval of the minute. So we need to do a roll call. Counselor Pelletier, how do you or how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Dumeay.
Aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Aye.
Counselor Braggden.
Aye.
Chair, Danforth, aye, passes six zero. We are now into special presentations and first up on the agenda, we have EMPD, twenty twenty four year in review, and that looks like Corporal Fitzgerald here with us.
Thank you. Um, did you guys all get the official sheet?
Yep.
I apologize, I would have forgotten to let the manager sooner to sort of get your packet, but. So this is what I am gonna discuss tonight, so I wanted to make sure that you all had it in case there was questions. You may have seen in the, you know, in our local paper, I have gone to, um, East Millaukeet Board as well as the Midway Board and kind of given a presentation and that's very similar to what I'm going to give you guys tonight. So I, I do think that it is important that you guys understand through what we do all the time in the course, um, of the year, because we don't get to meet and speak and talk, but. Um, so just kind of to start off with, so as you do see, um, eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-five total calls for service for our eighteen twenty twenty-four, which was, um, an increase of over a thousand calls from last year, so a little half percent increase over, uh, twenty twenty-three. There were small decreases in East Millaukeet and Midway, and there was a very large increase in the Town Millaukeet, so Millaukeet's call volume actually increased twenty-three percent uh, by one thirteen hundred calls. So I attribute that, and what we heard the statistics a lot, to the, uh, Van 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 Home case. So we receive a lot of calls, um, regarding that investigation, especially around that, yeah, um, it would be enough to get another call paid from, uh, prior client, making money. So each one of those is obviously an instant call for service, so I think, uh, that is a big attributing background, I don't think that's all to people, thirteen hundred call increases, uh, but I think that's definitely a part of that. So, uh, so overall, we did, uh, the ten percent increase call per day. Uh, there are some things that, you know, we're starting to see is a lot more calls that require multi-officer response. So, you know, statistically, you know, we have one officer or two in the evenings outside in Millaukeet, but we were seeing where all officers on duty are responding to calls the seriousness of the calls or the people, uh, that are involved in the call. Uh, and in the statistical sheet, you'll see thirteen thousand and change of observed offenses. Um, so the difference of the total calls for service and the observed offenses, so a call for service is one single call. The officer shows up on scene and observes multiple offenses or multiple violations. When that call is processed and documented, all of the offenses that are observed are documented at one is. So the observed offenses, you know, you could have one call that has three or four or five observed offenses, that's why it's a higher number. But that's an accurate representation of exactly what the officer deals with, uh, throughout the course of the year. So yes, you know, we responded to shy of twelve thousand calls, but in these twelve thousand calls we observe, um, you know, all those different offenses. So that was an increase of five and a half percent. Uh, so just a little bit more on, you know, kind of this whole process and the work behind all of it. Uh, I have the lucky job that I get to approve all eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-five calls for service. That has become a more time-consuming process in the last couple of years because of changes, federal level and state level, how we report crimes. And it's more work for our officers, so every, not every report, but a lot of reports have to go through a validation process. And the officers have to include so much, uh, demographic information, like, so ages, recent, sex, uh, you know, height, weight, all of that information. So when we go to validate, you know, report, definitely, or all that's in there, and then plus, there's so many other factors that they want, uh, you know, where these occur, and so whether it be arrests, you know, business, things like that, um, time of day, weapons, drugs, alcohol involvement, all of this, so it's, you know, a process to be able to, um, approve and validate all of it. Plus, last year, we now have to report our demographics, traffic stops, the state domain. So if you look, we had sixteen hundred and forty motor vehicle stops last year. So for every traffic stop an officer makes, we now have to report to the Attorney General's Office because of the change in law, the person's race, um, and it's all perceived, what the officer perceived, cannot ask. So it's their, their race, their gender, how old we think they are, what color we think they are, why we stopped them, what we did on the stop, if we gave them a warning, throw the ticket, if we arrested them, if we serviced their car, um, every single traffic stop, we have to document all that and we have to report that to them. So all these things, obviously, put way more workload on us, and we, and we don't have any certain tailors staff, so it's all been off to the. Just to touch on some of the incidents, um, you know, the increases and decreases, uh, from previous year. I will add this, I didn't get to add it to the other two towns. Uh, we were actually, I was actually contacted yesterday by the State Bureau of Identification and Crime Reporting, um, and they were a little shocked at our statistics because we have, you know, suspended our crime reporting for last year and shocked in a good way. So overall, um, we had a decrease in crime. Possibly. And we also had an increase in our clearance rate, but what that means is, you know, say there's a hundred crimes that are reported and not all crimes are, um, tracked by the defense, um, but the clearance rate is the amount of harassment or citation. So, so typically, you know, sixty, seventy percent is the normal clearance rate last year, uh, we were up to like eighty. So a lot of that means like our burglaries, our thefts, our assaults, that they're not going unsolved, that they're being solved, people are being prosecuted. It doesn't mean that they, you know, were all found guilty, but at least from our perspective, you know, we charged them, it's all crimes. Our clearance rate, uh, went up to eighty-three percent last year, which is very positive and, you know, attributed to the officers that are, you know, work on these cases. Like I said, the overall crime rate went down, um, so, so that is positive. So we did see, uh, a, uh, our aggravated assaults doubled since twenty twenty-four compared with the previous year. But overall, we saw a decrease in simple assaults and assault on assault officers. Um, so the previous year, we actually caught at least officers that were assaulted in twenty twenty-four, you know, that's good. We saw an increase in our alcohol percent, uh, alcohol offenses, um, by almost fifty percent. And ATV violations, which we know in all three communities, that's, that's a pretty hot button issue. Uh, but I think, you know, with the enforcement we've done and we've done a lot more public education, uh, there was a decrease in overall violations. But we did see a twenty-seven percent increase on complaints. So, you know, we're getting more phone calls, people complaining about the ATVs, but I think a lot of them, we're finding that they are following, you know, what the orders are, or just, I think. Uh, but, you know, we, the violations are. A statistic that as an agency that we are very proud of is we saw an eighty-three percent decrease in burglaries. Twenty twenty-four, we only had one burglary, twenty twenty, compared to, uh, six the previous year. burglaries have always been, they're a very hard crime to solve, um, but, you know, burglaries a lot of times can be attributed, you know, people that are drug seeking and or looking for, you know, wanting your product to exchange for drugs. Uh, so where we've been very proactive on that, I think we've seen that decrease in burglaries. Um, also again, decreasing prohibition from links. And, um, we did see a decrease in our drug offenses, so in twenty twenty-three, we had ninety-eight drug offenses. And in twenty twenty-four, we had sixty, so thirty-three percent. Some of that can be attributed to, um, the last couple of years, obviously, we have very proactive with drug enforcement and, you know, we have a lot of people, uh, in this region that are serving offenses because of that, but that can be a factor, but again, I also think, you know, us being so proactive in fact. Uh, decrease, uh, drug overdoses by fifty-three percent, again, that's another positive statistic. Uh, we had a decrease in our disorderly complaints and also a decrease in our operating, I don't know, fifty-five hundred this year and thirty-eight this year. I think one thing with OUI is that we are seeing more, we're encountering more people that are under the influence of drugs than they are alcohol. Uh, but we are fortunate that we have a drug recognition expert on staff, um, Attorney Clayton. So, uh, her purpose with that is that we arrest someone that we suspect of drugs and alcohol, you know, an intoxicizer doesn't show you, but it's a lot of homes. So they undergo a DRE exam, which is formed by her and, um, you know, she's in a specialized school where she can tell, you know, based on the example of the R, of the impulse for drugs, and they also submit to a blot or urine screen that that's confirmed, um, her example is all. But we did see a decrease in mental health calls, um, by nineteen percent compared to the previous year, a hundred and twenty-five response to mental health. The crisis is still a hundred and one this year. That number is, is a lot. Um, if you look at that, you know, essentially every other day, we are wanting to help any mental health crisis. So that, that number is high. So a decrease in our response to method violence, uh, small decrease, ten percent. We saw a very large increase in our police information, um, calls. But what that is, that's essentially they catch all of the other categories, but a lot of those lamps in your home cases, that's how they were categorized, um, a thirty-five percent increase. Type of call. Decrease in both, um, stopping and resisting, interfering with police, um, fifty-seven percent decrease. Uh, our sex offenses did double last year, so that's a very unfortunate statistic. Uh, so the previous year, we only had two sex offenses. Uh, twenty twenty-four, or, and that, um, is can be more than just, you know, people think it's expensive, uh, a lot of these ones are, um, sexual assaults, not so much, um, child behavior. They're more sexual assault. Increase in our suicide attempts, but we had a very sharp increase in our, our response to a five of a four hundred percent. Motor vehicle accidents, um, the previous year, we had none, last year, we had four, so a very large increase. Uh, but we did have a decrease in our property damage accident, but a small accident. Traffic offenses, we saw a decrease in twenty twenty-four, and again, I want to attribute a lot that our officers past several years were very aggressive with our traffic enforcement, more so in the summertime months because we have a lot of out-of-state traffic that comes through town. And, you know, believe it or not, a lot of people up here visit, think that the law is silent, they go police, and they're living in a no man's land, so, you know, Speedway ninety-five out here, so, uh, but I think, you know, words got no. But we have seen, uh, you know, and I, that, that is a positive, um, statistic, so that is good. We had an increase in thefts, in vehicle thefts, we had a very large rash of, uh, further motor vehicles and stolen vehicles this year. And the, uh, the positive news of that, I think, of all of our stolen vehicles, have a lot of that covered. Uh, so that's awesome. Provision and, uh, bail violations both decreased in twenty twenty-four. Uh, I don't think it's because people are not being charged, I think a lot of this change because a lot of judges are releasing people on bail and they're not putting conditions on them. You know, standard sets of bail conditions, no other condition, where in the past, you would see that they would have conditions, no curfew, no use of possession of alcohol, drugs, weapons, things like that, a lot of times we're leaving that off, they'll, you know, put them on the standard bail condition, basically, don't commit any crimes, come to court when we done. Um, personally, I think that's, uh, a very bad road that we're going down, and some may have seen there's actually legislation right now where they're trying to decriminalize bail violations. Um, I, I won't get on that soapbox, but, uh, we're seeing people that we're dealing with that are on four, five, six, seven, eight, um, sets of bail conditions, the only thing that that helps us is they commit a crime, they go to jail, they see a judge, the judge lets them out on bail, and we just keep going over and over and over again, that's why when someone has four, five, six, seven, eight bail conditions, those are all heavy weights. Um, so, I don't know if the answer to that is. Um, a decrease in, in warrant arrests and a decrease in our weapons calls and our weapons of, of that. Both that. But before I go on, I just have a couple of things to kind of update you guys on. Anyone have any questions on any of that?
We don't.
And obviously, on this statistic sheet, as you guys look me on through it, you know, if you have questions, what, what are the offensive means, you know, what, um, that might look like, I'm more than happy to put something in there, I don't, you know, or cage talk, right? This is your time, if you guys have any questions on any of the call, just, but I'd love to answer them.
Go ahead, Counselor Braggden.
Uh, thank you first off for coming to this presentation. I always love to see this when I come around. Uh, the city and town ordinance is the eight seventy-seven just for Millaukeet.
Uh, no, that's for all three communities, so the big thing with that is, with that, a lot of times that is, that is, um, more so like when you, the properties in town, like your rec areas, things like that, dairy pond, down, like at night, we check that because, you know, those things are, and that is, you know, us documenting that we've checked out some of those people. Usually when there's, uh, town ordinance violation, it's documented under something more, so animal calls, um, business or a license violation, uh, things of that nature. So the, the ordinances are more just the proactive, um, you know, checking, right, or anything like that, we do a parking issue, those are typically documented on the parking problems. We try to categorize them accurately.
Okay, perfect, that's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Dumeay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Brad, when you guys list the school patrols, is that something that you guys automatically do on a, it looks probably like two to three times a day? Is that calls to the school or is that just you guys doing your rounds? And when you do that, is that interior school or just exterior schools?
So you'll see, uh, two categories. Uh, so the school patrol is more so like when the options are present for arrival and dismissal at the school. And if you look under what is well. Um, school safety, yeah.
School safety relations?
Yes. That is when we go into the school itself. So we have, uh, you know, Officer Edson, great, uh, goes into the school, walks around the school, meets with the student. Um, that's how that one is documented, the patrol is more being present at the dismissal, with school safety relation is when we're going into the school, interacting with them. And that is separate, um, it won't be many on this report, but we should see more next year, is when he goes in and teaches the dare program, that actually has a separate category as well. So obviously, you know, the dare program is once a week in Millaukeet, right, the street, once. And that is going to have a very positive also. So there are a couple of other categories. Now, if we get called to school for an incident, uh, that's documented more on what we need to, whether it be, you know, a lot of times, we're juvenile problems, uh, you know, we have been called to the school if they find. That sounds out there.
Thank you, and it sounds like, uh, we're trending in the right direction on a lot of things, and a couple of things we're not trending in, in the, in the right direction, and a lot of things are determined on state.
Yeah.
State guidelines and rules, regulations, so it's.
Expect, and, and I think that, if you don't, you can tell you the same thing. You're probably not going to see call volume decrease. I think you're always going to start to see call volume is going to gradually increase year after year, because, uh, people call for public service more than ever. And I think you're always going to see call volume increase. But I think we are, like I said, trending in the right direction with, of those call volume, and I think we have taken steps in helping that. I mean, we, we encounter people, um, you know, known drug users or known drug traffickers that will tell us that when our dog is working, they don't leave the house. They have a lot of alcohols, when the K nine is on, they don't leave the house because they don't want to risk encounter. Um, so, which is great, that's what we want, you know, and obviously, um, as you can see, you know, from the statistics, we have, um, had seventy-one K nine deployments or, or training session last year, so the dog is, you know, definitely being utilized and the dog is very successful, uh, you know, we found drugs, scum, cash, everything that, you know, we, we had hoped for, but it has also worked as it, um, a lot of this is a problem, although I do think that we are, you know, and, and I also think that, you know, we've been, you know, several years now with the, the combined effort between all three communities, with the police department, so I think people are starting to get used to it. They're seeing this more, you know, they see the lights more, you know, they, they know that we're out, they know that we're active, um, so, that all.
Well, for my chair, I want to share my appreciation, and I'm sure that the rest of the counselors also, uh, thank you for the relationship that, that your department has, uh, after the Town Millaukeet, so it goes.
Is, uh, you know, in our opinion, it's working very well, and we've seen a lot of very positive things, you know, with the combined effort of all three communities, you know, one shared police department and, um, but I think definitely in the right direction. Now, if we can just get some luck with hiring, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that. Uh, but before I go, any more questions on any of that?
Mr. Manager, and then I will follow you.
I don't have a question, I want to share a short story. Uh, we, I know how you guys love it when I do that. Um, you know, Corporal Fitzgerald talked about being comfortable, being, seeing, uh, the police out and about and, and seeing the jobs and whatnot, but I, I, you know, when I was leaving the office a couple of days ago, um, I'm, I'm walking out on the sidewalk, I'm about to get in my truck, Officer Edson is out there on the sidewalk, um, and some middle school age kids are across the street, and they're going, oh, snowball fight with the cop, you know, and, and he turned around and he goes, all right, let's do it, you know, and, and so next thing I know, you know, him and I and these two kids are on the sidewalk and we're, you know, tossing snowballs at each other, we're having a blast. Uh, you know, Officer Clayton pulls up, the dog's in the backseat, like, you know, talking to the dog, giving the ducks. It, you know, is it, it, it's that type of thing that you don't see about or hear about when you're talking about drug arrests and domestic abuse and all that sort of stuff, so, you know, their, their presence, um, as community members, uh, with, you know, from the small, it's certainly, uh, having a positive effect while on, on all ages. Uh, that was just really cool. Happened. Uh, the kids did.
Snowball fights are a violation of penal code subsection four dash eight dash nine two, so thank.
Well, you came up with
Yeah.
a number, it's not the right one, but yes, technically, um, sn- throwing snowballs and ice chunks is legal and, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll take that up now.
Yeah, we'll take another bud.
Underwrite, yeah, so.
This meeting recorded.
Yeah.
Sure is, Officer Edson did not throw any snow.
So, excuse me, so I do, um, I'm just curious about a statistic that you have on here. Um, welfare check, it shows that you had provided five hundred and seventy-seven welfare checks to members, um, as of the tri-town community. Is that because we have so many older people living alone, um, with other, other family members checking on them, or is it, can you just tell me what those welfare checks are?
I mean, I think that's, so I, I think that's part of it, it'll be having very high elderly population, a lot of their children around here anymore, so they call us, you know, they'll try to get a hold of them, they can't, um, they'll call us to go over and check on them, which, you know, love to do, because believe it or not, instances like that, we have found a lot of elderly that have been on the floor for quite some time, and they can't call for help, um, you know, um, obviously, we arrive and it's not a good outcome. But a lot of it is, you know, just that, you know, people trying to reach family members or even friends or, you know, people are posting concerning things on Facebook, that, that team writer, that show up at work, yeah, terrible. It can be a multitude of reasons, but I think more peo- more people are being active in calling and having checked on, and I'm just, I'll get something else, I don't care. You know, if they call a couple of times every morning, they don't answer, you know, waiting for call. And that's what we would suggest, you know, if it is not normal that, you know, you call your whoever every morning, then they pick up, and this one morning you call and they don't answer, call. You know, don't wait, call us, you know, and we tell people this all the time, this is one of our biggest frustrations, is I can't tell you how many people will see us on the street and say, geez, three days ago, this happened. I want to tell you about. Why didn't you call, why, why? Well, that's, that is literally the prime example of what you think happened. You know, like, we have officers that work twenty-four seven, um, but if you don't call us when it happens, you know, A, if it's, it was a crime, or it could be, you know, something that you think is suspicious, then um, might be leading us to something else that we were looking for, or, you know, calling for that family, I didn't want you to bother, bother to call you at eleven o'clock at night to go check on my aunt. But calling us at eleven by the same day, I'm sitting on the floor for eight, nine hours. So, you know, we, we stress this and stress this and stress this for people who call us when stuff happens, don't wait, call us, report it, um, you know, you call us on the phone now, there's online options, um, for reporting things for those people that don't want to call, or put it online, it's immediately, uh, received and given out to us. So, don't wait, call us, I think.
Appreciate that.
That's right, yeah, um, that's what a lot of them are, you have a high elderly population, a lot of families that's not down, they don't have anyone else, um, and they call us, uh, generally. We do, you know, we encourage.
Thank you. Carry on, you have more?
So just a couple of quick things we wanted to update you on from, uh, you know, things we have talked about in the past, so, you know, we did, obviously, the last time we had our quarterly meeting, we talked about trying to get an officer in the school, in working with the school. Uh, that is kind of on the back burner right now, unfortunately, because we are down three patrol positions and we have one officer in the criminal justice academy. I'm cleaning out the floor right now. So, uh, every able-bodied we have is working on, uh, you know, filling our patrol shifts and meet our minimum mandatories. So, uh, it's not something that we're dismissing, but we've got to get some of the patrol positions filled first, because we can't hold someone from patrol and go work in the, you know, work in the school. So, hoping that we can get some people hired, um, but I'll be honest, the applicant pool, we're not seeing applicants, I don't know what it is. You know, our pay is comparable with a lot of other agents. You know, we offer some other. You know, we offer some other, uh, incentives to try and get people to come work here, so. I'm not sure what the issue is, other than I think some of it, location, number of people, won't be up here. You know, a lot of them want to be in the cities, or they want to work in those really big agents. Uh, unless we find those couple oddballs that love the outdoors and, you know, as a young person. We're just, we're just not seeing, we're not seeing the applicant. So, we're trying, uh, we did just hire, you know, a new part-time guy to help us out on weekends and stuff, but. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't kill the, the big point. We will have, you know, Officer Nap, who's serving in the academy. I don't know, he's going to be four, five, six, he's, he graduates in May and then he'll be back, but that'll, it'll take away some of that burden, but. You know, if we could get one or two more guys, it would be, uh, huge, huge help. You know, Chief Cody just got the hires too, I was like, I was talking after, figure out how he did it, cause, um, cause we're not at it. So, I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer, uh, going to be on that, like I said, I truly don't think it's bad. You know, we got the payout last year, uh, made us competitive with other agencies. We have, you know, the same hiring plans, but most all these other law enforcement agencies. I think, you know, healthcare is a little expensive, but these healthcare is expensive right now, um. So, I, I'm not sure, but we're open to suggestions if anyone has any. Uh, we do have, as noted on there, we do still have five, uh, rather in-depth criminal investigations that are going on. Uh, from last year that, um, will still be going on, but some of these have been going on for over a year that. You know, are, uh, serious felony level cases that require, you know, a lot of, uh, work and follow-up and. Interviews and such, so we, we do still have some pretty in-depth criminal investigation. One thing I wanted to, uh, bring to you, and I, I can't remember if I mentioned it in the, in the past, one of our updates, but. We were awarded a thirty-three thousand dollar grant through, um, through Putowski County Emergency Management. The funds basically trebled out from the state, uh, from the feds, the states, to the local emergency management offices and. Uh, so last year, we were awarded a thirty-three thousand dollar grant to install, uh, vehicle repeaters in all of our cars. So basically, what the vehicle repeaters do is, so the town Milanoke has about zero portable radio company. So when an officer is outside their car, their portable radio barely ever works. So the vehicle repeater essentially, um, turns your car into a radio tower. So when the officer on their portable radio, they're usually within a close proximity to their car. It amplifies their portable radio signal, so we have had instances, uh, in Milanoke. More so where we have had officers screaming for help on the radio because they were, you know, involved in altercation. You know, with the defender, or they needed another officer, things were a little bad. And never would have, no one ever heard them, um. Just the summer, uh, Sergeant Gee was, you know, on a foot chase here in the downtown. And he was actually on the wrong radio channel, that's probably the only reason we heard him, uh, you know, asking for help, but. We were able to hear, but he was on the wrong channel, uh, thankfully, we were close enough to be able to hear. So these vehicle repeaters will be able to, uh, increase officer safety. And again, it's going to be at no cost, taxpayers all, uh, funded through grant funding. And within the next couple of weeks, hopefully, our first one will be installed, it would be a little bit of a process to get them in all the cars. Because we've got to get the car to, to really get them, you know, done, but, uh, you know, that's got to be. Uh, and also with that, there will be the ability, once we have them installed, the fire departments could also put in our repeater frequency. So if we were working a large incident somewhere, the fire department had this frequency and we were there with them. They can essentially also use our car as that, you know, to act as a repeater. So it's not solely for us, it can be used for them as well, so that is something that we will, uh, once we get it installed, we get the frequency. We won't share it with them if they choose to call and use it from, um, our scene. So hopefully. Depending on, uh, you know, who I, who I talk to, we are slated to receive ninety-four thousand dollars. Um, from funding that Congressman Golden put into legislation. Uh, it was approved in March of twenty twenty-four, we applied for it in, uh, twenty twenty-three, but it's approved in twenty twenty-four. And we've been waiting, uh, yeah. Uh, I heard just the other day that March fifteenth of this year, there's. So, uh, Congressman Golden put in a, um, bill that was just shy of a million dollars for Northern Maine Law Enforcement. Who admits modernization. So, the, uh, sponsor of it was the Maine State Police, and the, the sub recipients were a lot of municipal and county law enforcement agencies. But we did get on as a sub recipient, and, uh, we're slated to receive ninety-four thousand dollars. Um, of the just shy of a million dollars that got. So with that funding, we will be using it to purchase, uh, body cameras, the entire agency. Uh, that is the biggest cost, those body cameras, body camera themselves is not expensive. Body cameras are low, fourteen hundred dollars a piece, it's the storage, probably, should. Forty-five thousand dollars for five years. So the reason I bring this up is, uh, you know, so for the first five years, everything's covered on grant funding. Um, after the five years, storage will be have, be something that we work for communities on that, you know, have. Uh, the reason I say that is. The, all the video storage will be stored on a cloud, um, owner of our cameras, but we don't have to worry about. Purchasing server, purchasing storage, and, you know, having the security to keep, you know, keep the videos, uh, everything will be stored. Um, and Motorola is the company that will be, obviously, they're a very large company, that's, you know, that's a point where. Tech savvy people and funding that we do. Um, typically, depending on the size of the agency, and how many videos they have, be how much. We'll pay for storage, but that will be something, you know, a couple of years down the road, we'll have to talk more further. But along with that comes the work that body cam. So everybody thinks that, you know, you just take a video of the incident and, you know, you can turn it over. Uh, there's way more work involved, so you've got to figure, once we have body cameras, you got eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-five calls per service that had video attached. No, but, you know, obviously, a vast majority of those calls would have some sort of video. Now, when you have three officers that go to the same call, you have to have video from all three officers. So if that case were to go to, um, get sent to the DA's office, so say, you know, we leave here tonight and there's two officers that, um. Get annoyingly out here in front of the town office, both officers, the video needs to be included in that report because they're both there. So it's not as much of an issue when it goes to court because you send them the raw video. What, when the issue becomes is, when we have cameras, it's now subject to lawyer. So if someone wants to make a request for a video of an incident, we have to provide it, but then we also have to scrub the video. So, we can't provide them with, you know, a picture of, you know, somebody that's, you know, not involved in a class. Or, you know, victims of crimes, you know, we have to bore out their faces, we have to, you know, when they make statements that include any personal information. Of the, the, or address and medical information, anything like that, that all has to be redacted. So, there's, you know, a lot of work involved in it, uh, through the processing of videos. So, again, just something, not that, you know, we're not coming in and asking for another position or, yeah, you know, something like that. You know, we're probably, you know, being lucky enough to do on my own, um. But as that, you know, work, you know, it's great to have the cameras, it's a great tool, but, you know, there's the work that goes along with it, that's going to be. Something that's going to be a big change for us, but it's possible, okay. Uh, and then the last part of that ninety-four thousand dollars, I think you've heard us talk about, uh, a Truenarc before. Which is the, uh, most, pretty much the most state-of-the-art device for testing drugs. Uh, safest piece of equipment to test drugs, so typically, as you see on TV, you know, the officer will take a sample of the drug and put it in the bag and be shaken. Those days are gone, we, you know, technology and the exposure to, God knows what else people put inside their bodies. So the, uh, Truenarc, essentially, you know, if you were to seize a bag of drugs. Uh, you use the device, uses infrared lights, rays to scan the device, and it will tell you. Uh, so if someone says, oh, I have a bag of sugar, it will literally tell you that it's sugar, but you don't ever have to tell them. So the reason these are so important now is the district attorney's office, when we send them cases, drug cases, they essentially want a Truenarc tested on them. Which is all well and good, but if we arrest someone tonight, they go to court tomorrow, our nearest Truenarc's back. So, but like, we can just run the drugs down the back, or have them test them run home. Bring the person down the back, or drop them off the jet like, uh, something, so. And there's no Truenarc going to the back, so, uh, you can't run someone there and have a test it, so. They have been, they have worked with us, they are understanding of it, um, that we do the best when we can to get them down there and test it, but it's not. Just, you know, something that we can just do, that would appear, so. A very expensive piece of equipment, um, I think we got the funding for thirty-five thousand dollars. I think when we build it, actually purchase. Um, hopefully, we'll, uh, deal with funds, some money elsewhere to, to kind of offset that cost, but, you know. Forty thousand dollar hit for a piece of equipment, it'll be a big hit, but it can also be used, um. And it's not just specifically for drugs, it has the ability to test almost anything that you can imagine for some. If the fire department were to go to a home and encounter something, some sort of substance that they weren't sure what it was. You know, we might have the ability to win, test it, tell them that, you know, banner free or free on or something like that. Um, but it does have that ability of, just, uh, testing. And I think those were the, the biggest things that I had, um, you know, we did do a post this week. Um, and if you guys can help us out with this, that we, uh, put some more options on our website, some more online options that. You know, you guys may have seen that on our Facebook page. So we now put the ability on there, so if people want a property watch done on their home, they can go online. And, you know, click on the link, brings them to a form, they fill it all out, comes to us. You know, all the information, you know, obviously stays with us, it's confidential, so we don't share people's property information. But if you're going away on vacation, you want your, you know, your home checked on, you can go online, fill it out, we get it immediately. So, you know, you don't have to call, or you don't have to, you know, come to the police department. The biggest thing that we, you know, are looking for some help on is, um, for businesses to go on and. Register their, you know, register their business, but to fill out, you know, the form for emergency contact. Well, the biggest things that we run into is when we're responding to businesses at night, um, and we've been dealing with one with the fire department. Uh, the past couple of weeks for the business in town, that there's multiple times going there, to figure out who actually owns the property. Um, is to get the business to go on and register that information. So if we go there, you know, for an alarm, a broken window or a fire alarm, we know who to call to come. You know, shut the alarm off, or, you know, deal with, uh, you know, whatever the, the issue may be, so, you know, so that, you know, we're looking to. Tell all this business information to the high bidder, uh, it's for us to help you, because I think the one with the fire department was. Sometimes we went there with that alarm, that it was bothering the neighbors because the alarm kept going off, we had no idea who owned this. And then eleven o'clock at night, it sounded like we called the town office and figured out, so if we could, you know, if you guys could kind of help us get that advertised. So people go on and, uh, log that information, that will be, you know, really helpful to us, you know, to give the officer, for yourself, and the fire department. You know, when we need that information, that we hours of night have quick, uh, quick access to that. That's all I got, if you got anything.
Very comprehensive, any counselor, final question, comment?
Shaking her head.
No, I think we can help get that information out like you just requested, I think that's good for our community members to know, thank you very much.
Banner and I communicate constantly, so, don't hesitate to, plus, so anything, we'll see you in a couple of months.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will now transition to our second presentation, special presentation, Diana Furpower from Milanoke Memorial Library, we have a quarterly review. Diana. Give you a minute to get settled. Or thirty seconds. No worries.
Three, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight seconds, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, tonight, I'm going to touch on some operational updates, uh, programs and facilities. And then I'll get into how our twenty twenty-four operating budget, um, since our school year ends in December. I have that information shared, as well as an updated version of our twenty twenty-five budget. So last time, Senate in fall, shared draft, and I have updated version, uh, present. So, starting with, uh, programs and operations, um, I did want to just share a little bit about our program. Um, we really, you know, we're not trying to push a particular agenda, but really respond to needs and interests that we're seeing and. And represent, you know, everyone who's here and what they're. Um, we also really love when someone comes up with an idea and we can help them, support them, make it a reality. Um, but a few things that we are particularly interested in are fostering lifelong learning in all areas. And providing opportunities for connection, we're seeing that as a big issue, you know, especially with older adults, but I think for whole, general here. And so sometimes the simplest things like, hey, uh, we're going to set a time every other week, or you can come and have coffee and chat, uh, which we were kind of inspired by. Uh, the rec department did, uh, on, those can make a big difference. So, a few of the programs that we've had recently and ones that are coming up, I'll include this on the top. The senior coffee chats, that would including two, uh, we have a pretty active writers group. Um, there seems to be a lot of interest in like poetry and literature and, you know, getting together and sharing stories, that. Um, as well as, um, some of the ones coming up, I will actually be doing a workshop on frauds and scams. Uh, we do encounter a lot of folks, uh, dealing with that, uh, online, cybersecurity basics, I'm no expert, but just. You know, a lot of the common things that you see, and I'm also going to be doing one on graphic design. Um, so we try to cover some of those tech help things that come up regularly, uh, that I think. Um, for adult programs, I was mentioning some of those simple social things, uh, another one that I think will be exciting for. Maybe people of all ages, but especially older adults, is we're going to be doing a monthly mending meetup. So you can come, we're going to have basic sewing supplies, and you can mend your clothes, learn basic skills from folk. There's a lot of interest in sharing those types of skill generation, uh, and addressing. Isolation, which does contribute to my thought. So, for resource-based programs, this is kind of another category. Um, we had a great info session with Inquis on all of their transportation options back in January. Another one with fire department and the Red Cross on safety. And coming up, um, this, you know, definitely in response to questions we've gotten about, through these rebates, how do I access them? We're going to be doing an info session for the missions of Maine on all of the rebates they have available. Uh, and some other resource-based programs as well, which, um, like the, those firms and workers that we're doing. It's just such a great way to bring in a statewide or a regional resource and bring them right here into the community in an accessible way that people can. Uh, can utilize, a lot of these groups don't necessarily have it on the ground. So, lastly, youth programs, um, we had, just wrapped up our February vacation camp. Do every year with friends who've come with platters and Al Gore Institute, that was a lot of fun. We're seeing an interest in nature-based programs for sure, with kids, uh, and adults. Of just things that bring, you know, what they're learning and seeing outside, you know, bringing that into stories and talking about it and. So we actually have, um, tomorrow is our second nature littlest group, so they, they come, they meet, they usually share a story. And they go outside, look at the, uh, the top of the, of the last one, they were finding pine cones and different things and identifying them. And just really connecting. So they, they come, they meet, they usually share a story and they go outside, look at the, uh, the top of the, of the last one, they were finding pine cones and different things and identifying them and just really connecting with where they are, uh, so that's cool to be part of that early on. Um, I'll move on to operational updates. Um, we are exploring options to do extended hours again, uh, this summer. We tried that for the first time last summer where we had one day where we were open until eight p.m. Um, we're seeking feedback from the public council and anyone interested right now and what hours would best serve you. Um, because we can be flexible, there's a lot of libraries that open at noon and stay open. Really, um, and we really want to try to reach more people, a wider audience and more people might work in a full nine-to-five, so if you have feedback, share or you know someone who does, send them. Um, I did want to touch on behavioral issues, so I think I've talked about youth behavior, uh, at least one of them was you all. We were having, you know, a lot of teens and teens in particular where it's, you know, there were some behaviors that weren't really appropriate for the space. I do think we've made a lot of progress with them in terms of building relationships, setting expectation. And it's something that, you know, it's ongoing work, I think every year before the summer starts, there's gonna be some work to be done, like, hey, what does this mean? What, what does it mean to be in the library? What are the, you know, how do we treat each other? There's always some of that, but I'm really encouraged by seeing that area and seeing kids really able to coexist with, with ages. So, as for adults, uh, we have seen some more challenges, uh, in the past year and, you know, over the past quarter in particular. Um, with adult behavior, I really attribute almost all the incidents to underlying mental health or mental illness issues. Um, you know, this is a hard area for that, there's not very many on-the-ground resources, um, for people. There's nowhere they can really go easily to address that, and so I think a lot of times we'll come to, you know, one of the few public spaces here, the library, and things come up. So we really do our best to accommodate everybody, but there have been a few instances where we've had to ask people leave or even ban them due to behaviors, threatening remarks, things like that. And we've been really good about this on that. Uh, I did actually, I leave it here in the slides and I can always send it out afterward, but I wrote an article named Policy Review about this issue. Uh, I mean, about adult behavioral issues and also about how libraries are seeing a lot more folks, uh, experiencing, you know, with un, unmet basic needs. Um, we've kind of become the de facto, like, on-the-ground social workers, even though we don't have the training. And, you know, this is a thing in not just Maine, but the nation. So I think it's interesting to kind of zoom out on that and it helps me understand why our health desk is being, why we're seeing that. It's not just like our community had so many issues, but, you know, every community does, it's, um, it's broader, so. So, check that out if you are interested in reading a half-page journal or. I'm very, hey. So. Uh, for facilities, uh, you may have heard from someone, I'm not sure, uh, apparently it got brought up at a county commissioners meeting, but we've been having sprinkler leaks at the library. We are investigating it right now, it's at the level where we had to do an insurance claim, um, and we're really just gonna try to see if we can get our, our insurance company to pay for it. Um, but honestly, it's a little bit a mystery right now and I'll let you all, um, surprise situation. Um, we've also had some less serious network issues and we're really just trying to document everything we're learning about this complicated building. Uh, have better, yeah, documentation systems and really compile them into a usable building manual so that we can anticipate and prevent a lot of issues. But it seems like there's always something and you'll see that reflected in the budget. Okay, uh, lastly on facilities, I just wanted to remind you all of the timeline for some of the capital projects we have coming up. These are not paid for by the operating budget, uh, we've, you know, secured funds outside of it. Um, we're still planning to do the drainage and patio project outside of the children's room, which I think is really gonna facilitate some of the programs I was talking about, like the nature littles where there's an outdoor space adjacent to the children's room. It would delay last year due to some issues with the contractor. So we are seeking bids for that and hope to have it ready to do this summer. Elevator modernization also delayed due to an issue with the contractor timeline. Um, learning a lot about construction management and it's never on the timeline to pick, but that is really confirmed for September and that will be great, have done, also paid for with, um, federal funds, um. And then roof replacement, we've had a lot of different issues with our roof over the past few years, it was something that got cut from our renovation uh, due to budgetary reasons. And we did receive a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation that will, um, bring us most of the way there, what we need, but still writing for grants to, to get them out that we needed. So that would be probably next year at the earliest. Any questions on the operational piece, bring them on budgets?
I don't see any, Diana. Okay, continue.
So for the operating budget, uh, twenty twenty-four performance, big picture, the, uh, our income exceeded our budget significantly. Um, which is great, it's a bit less, um, when you look at this, uh, the panel outline, I just wanted to point out, kind of a, you know, it just came down to the timing of payments, we received the twenty twenty payment in early twenty twenty-four, so we have four, or sorry, five quarterly payments there. So really, if you take that out of the equation, it's really for the twenty budget, uh, our total sum was three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, which is still great. Um, primarily, we did well on the revenue side due to, um, having probably kind of a conservative budget and seeing increased, uh, donations and, you know, the effectiveness of our fundraising campaigns. Um, so that definitely exceeded expectations and we've updated the, the twenty twenty-five budget to reflect that. I think we're getting better at targeting which donors, um, are likely to give, sending them better and more consistent materials and providing options to memorialize and honor loved ones through donations, which are really. Um, any questions on the income side of things for, yeah?
Counselor Domi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the twenty twenty-four budget for the EU charges was fourteen oh four and what you actually took in was three twenty-nine?
Yeah, so they were not used as much as we thought. I thought that was a pretty conservative estimation, but it's, you know, it's probably been in the winter like two to three a month and in the summer, maybe seven, ten. So it's still pretty minor and I, you know, adjusted the budget.
See them more being used by local people or people traveling to New York?
Mostly visitor.
Okay.
But I've also, uh, heard of it, I think we've gotten some feedback from visitors that because it's the level charger, which the same town has, very slow. So it's not, you know, the best solution for like fully charging, it's more, oh, you're here passively, you know, doing that as a entity.
Sure, thank you.
Counselor Bragden.
Kind of on the same topic as Counselor Domi, um, has there been maintenance issues with them yet? I feel like I saw a little bit of that profession there from that.
Uh, we haven't had any with our.
That's all I have.
Continue, thank you.
Uh, so big picture for expenses, we were over budget by about thousand dollars. Uh, the two primary reasons for that are HVAC issue, um, ongoing repairs with our heat pumps, which are not in some cases correctly installed in the first place, but we are past our warranty for those. Uh, and then some additional hourly staff time that was logged due to, uh, just having more work than we had budgeted for. So we're gonna try to be a little bit more strict about that, um, this year and have also discussed it certain stuff, you know, a lot in time. But overall, the bottom line, you know, we still had four thousand dollars of net income, so the increases in revenues made up for that. Um, getting into a little more detail for collection of materials and engagement, so like our collections and our programs, the under and decreased amount for next year. For facilities, I mentioned, uh, HVAC repairs. For administration. This was pretty much what we expected, some additional costs for mailers, but I think they, in terms of the donations they brought in. For payroll, uh, slightly over for staff hours that I mentioned, um, and that's about, for, for bottom line, about seven thousand dollars. Questions on the twenty twenty-four?
See none.
Okay, so our budget, um. Some of the big changes that you'll see since the, the October twenty twenty, twenty-four draft, on the revenue side, um, are, uh, we increased what we expect to bring in for revenues by a little over thirty thousand dollars. Um, that's due to, you know, us really feeling like, yeah, we bring in fifty-five thousand dollars a donation. Over the past, uh, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three, we brought in almost seventy thousand dollars. And some of those are significant donations, I don't wanna count on always hitting seventy, but I think we realized that our estimates had been kind of conservative and up to that number. And it's something that we're working on and, you know, developing professionally around doing that effectively. We also changed client items, we weren't sure if we would be renewing our contract with the Kattan Collaborative, that's still not, you know, formally decided, but it's seeming very likely, so we felt comfortable putting that in the budget. On the expense side, big picture, we, uh, were able to decrease expenses, uh, by about seven thousand, uh, mostly due to some of the staffing changes I'm gonna cover when we get to that budget. Couple more things I'll point out on the income side, as I've mentioned before, we used to have a separate friends of the library nonprofit and we've joined forces, so now fundraising events is kind of replacing that friends of the library line. We're working together with them on, uh, one, one bigger event in the summer, uh, save the date, July fifth. Um, and then two smaller ones throughout the year. However, uh, we have been doing financial planning over the past couple of months, it's been really great to work with a, actually a pro bono external consultant on that. We were able to get through one of our hunter. Um, and he's been really helpful in terms of pointing out like, these are the areas that are worth your effort on the revenue side of things. Um, and these are the ones that maybe are more than worth. So I think one of the high-level takeaways, I don't have like a formal plan to share yet, but I may at some point. It's just that fundraising events, like local type ones are maybe more of a good lever for outreach and just spreading the word about your work. You know, have open house style things, but like, you know, fake sales and that kind of stuff, it's not what's gonna help our bottom line, it's probably more like really investing in getting better at grant writing, getting better at fundraising and, you know, in terms of donations and that sort of stuff, as well as our relationship with the town. So, uh, that's been, just happy to do that. Questions on the income side of the budget?
I like the way you worded that with relationship to the town.
All right, I'll move on to the change. Um, not a lot of change here from the past budget except for the building repairs, um, line, so getting that uh, due to anticipated repairs, um, there's always something that seems to come up that you can't really avoid, but that's been the case. We did also add, um, a thousand dollars for an evacuation chair. We've been working on an emergency plan and consulted with Philly Lane and some folk at the Mill Oak School and kind of recommended meant to have in terms of evacuating for, or if it comes to that, uh, since there's not an exit, so that. Um, and I'll just also mention, if you have a contracted maintenance line, that's like cleaning, plowing, mowing, all of that stuff. We are definitely seeing a shift where, you know, it's not just that we're doing more than we previously did, but we often, you know, in the past, we had volunteers for like, I will plow, I'll mow, you all do this, a lot of those folks just aging out of, so we're having to take on maintenance contracts. Um, for administration, I know this is like a massive part of the budget right now, and I just wanna remind everyone that the asset management is, um, this is our last year at that level of asset management. In twenty twenty-six, that would be a prorated lower amount and then we will dissolve that new market tax credit process and be able to eliminate that item. So it allowed us finance innovation, great, that happened and we're excited to eliminate that. Other new, uh, administrative expenses that are, uh, showing up in this increase, uh, hiring a contracted grant writer, that's into the consulting line. So I think that's really gonna pay for itself, what it can bring in for grants and then contracted accounting and that's been like, that's not necessarily the best use of my time, I'm not a bookkeeping expert and having free up me and the assistant director to do what so. Moving on to payroll and the bottom line. Um, we have decided to eliminate a time relation of the collection specialists, um, we kind of restructuring theirs, their salaries, but, and I'm looking into that chart as I, from my last slide. But it does bring our bottom line negative seven thousand, it's a significant improvement from, I think, the, when I shared in the fall was somewhere like negative forty-six thousand, so I'm pretty happy about that and I think it's very possible we could. So the restructuring, uh, while we're on payroll stuff, um, the staff number, you know, decided to move away and we took that opportunity to really think about, okay, what's the best model and what's the appropriate amount of staff for a smaller? I think it's about, uh, four point four FTEs, really investing, you know, in, in these four full-time employees. Um, trying to work on salaries and benefits and, and investing in them for retention. Then having a smaller group of clerks and subs that takes some of the customer service off our day-to-day plate. Um, that's a model that a lot of, uh, small libraries use and I think it's gonna make sense for us. Uh, and give us flexibility to explore things like the extended hours, but having subs call in who are paid at a lower rate, um, that takes a lot of, uh. So, uh, yeah, that's the twenty twenty-five budget and I'm happy to go back to any piece that, that folks would like your information on.
Any counselors have questions? Counselor Bragden.
You have more feedback, thanks for you asking for feedback. Regarding hours, to answer your question that you had asked, personal experience, there have been five events that I can think of off the top of my head that me and my wife have been extremely interested in going to with our son, but around a Wednesday or a Tuesday at eleven o'clock, you know, and then we both work till four thirty-five o'clock at night. You know, it'd be nice to see some of those events on the weekend. Um, I know that's sometimes a little bit tougher, um, just from personal experiences as a working father. Uh, I'd love to bring my son to some of those events if they were more structured on the weekends. Thank you.
Sure, the feedback.
Any other counsel comment, feedback? I see none on the screen, so, thank you again, Diana, great, comprehensive report out. Continue, great work. Thank you so much. So that takes us to the town manager's report. You're on.
Hey.
The manager.
As usual, very lengthy and detailed report here. The full report is built on Council packet, on Council, uh, nation, page on our website and on the town manager's page. Schnell houses. Um, an archive of all reports since, by me, since, hey, so. You know, quarterly, I, potential standings updates, uh, council meetings. I do have year-to-date expense and revenue reports attached to this port. Certainly, any questions, uh, that are to talk about? We'll say. Please that finances remain in great shape. Both sides of the fiscal budget, same, they were facing long as they should this point in the year. Now. If you're looking at these reports, uh, that are attached, there's no doubt in my mind that some of those larger negative numbers that are shown shocking, though, day-to-day understanding of how it's financed. Work throughout the year. So those can happen throughout the year, uh, for several reasons. Generally speaking. Grant funding, uh, that is obtained or spent throughout, it's not included in the adopted budget, uh, that passes, so. Spend that money, um, after we receive it or after project is planned coming in. Question, uh, that money has to be fed through a department that is, uh, you know, an allowable vessel for for that funding to be spent, uh, related to our federal audits. So that will change balances in certain departments and show that spent a lot more money than it was approved. Uh, but when it comes to legality side of audit side of it. You know, it it looks much different than that. So. Uh, grant funds can do that. Or or their related costs for projects or tax dollars. Some of the annual expenses, uh, that are within our fiscal budget that are large numbers, uh, are begin in one location and then are separated, you know, by the end of the fiscal year so that things line up as they should, or you know, they are values that are unknown or unentered until later date. That stuff's processed. And that would be compensation bills, our coverage for those boy assurances or um, and then unexpected expenses that pop up. So when prove, you know, for example, a, uh, transfer site, maintenance budget, and then six months later, we find out there's, uh, you know, crumbling infrastructure underneath the hopper itself, and and we have to make a decision to request more money from the council, um, and then that, you know, to pay for that, repair that project. Funding gets added to the budget, but affects the original number so that it show that much more spent than approved. Um, and that is an actual thing to happen during this fiscal. You know, uh, another example I'll I'll show. You know, if you're looking at expense detail report. Count. Line zero, one, one, five economic elephant, the original total budget. For that was ninety two thousand dollars, shows that we spent a hundred and nine thousand dollars. But realistically, uh, uh, you know, seventy-ish thousand dollars from our brownfields grant funding, um, is fed into the budget and through that department. So where it's showing balance of negative seventeen thousand realistic budget is that roughly forty thousand. So, uh, some of these things are a little more complicated than looks at a view. If anybody interest or concern and if to talk, uh, further about those things, you know, stop by. Done. Uh, while we're talking about the fiscal budget, uh, you have, we are deep in the trenches of of the budget season right now. Workshops and special hearings are coming up. Free workshops scheduled in the end of March, so March twentieth, March seventh. And then April third will be our free budget workshops as planned. Of course, you know, those tentative, some things, subjects change. Uh, and then expect to do our first public hearing on seventeenth. Second special here and adoption of said budget. The workshops are between administration and council only, uh. All public are encouraged to attend to to stay up to date, but their input would be welcomed, uh, the conversation during special. Time to participate. Schedule. Additionally, to the dates here, and I will have something in paper this week to explain as well, uh, but April tenth. School will be here to do their, uh, presentation slash workshop, uh, their budget and then our expectation is that their uh, official special hearing and, uh, adoption same night as ours, uh, April point. So, if I don't go as well. April. Get getting a break and all along out. So. Uh, digging a little further in, uh, Public Works, you know, they've they've had some some struggles recently with, uh, we've got a couple of plow trucks that lost transmissions, uh, in the same week. And shortly after that, one of our big backup one-ton trucks, uh, that had a plow on it that we do some work with that plow had failed. Pretty unfortunate. Um, so one of those trucks has been hauled to Bangalore and it's, uh, process of fair. By a shop there, uh. See that come back, um, when it's still inoperable. Third backup truck is operable again, but not something plow roads with. Um, however, we would like to give some some serious thanks and ways to town of East Millinocket Public Works Department. Allowing us to borrow their backup plow truck. So so we do have enough to get the job done. Have crew and and some some equipment errors, uh, issues, but as long as folks remain patient with us during the snowstorm, they take a little longer than usual, but, uh, work is getting done. So. Thank you, Smolak. Stepping up and send the situation. Um, over at the transfer site, I wanted, I haven't mentioned this in a public meeting recently. It's been shared on our social media, on our website, email feeds and uh, that sort of stuff. Uh, but we have recently been able to expand our recycling, uh, uh, offerings over there, the the materials we can accept. Uh, so we, you know, in addition to the tin cans and round, uh, cardboard milk jugs or the plastic jugs. Newspaper, magazine, paperback books, phone books, box board, mixed paper, office paper, school paper and junk mail. Uh, so a lot more stuff can be, uh, alleviated from the hopper where we, where it costs us money to uh, handle and and have shipped away. And then we, uh, are able to, you know, even though we may not we we may fill one trailer in a year at this point, uh, but that is material that is then sold and becomes a revenue to the town. Uh, and then there's, you know, always the piece of better for the environment too. It's like, it's too fresh. So. Please, 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 uh, make the switch. Don't throw this stuff in the hopper. I see it all the time. Stuff, um, you know, we can go from those materials costing us more money to uh, offsetting our expenses, actually giving us some money back to 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 make that action less expensive. Uh, speaking of which, the cost per ton for waste, uh, for for tipping fees, we talk about that during the warrant orders regularly. Up until recently, it had been at eighty-three dollars a ton. For a while, it it just jumped to eighty-eight dollars a ton. So every tonnage of waste that comes out of that hopper, uh, is the bust. Eight dollars to the town. Those those tipping are huge and again. Or we can dial that back by recycling better on financial. Um, we're looking at the code department, uh, you know, keeping up with our new method of of providing ports on permitting. As Mr. Malcolm is doing so well, bringing that code office to life at forty years old. Irrelevancy, really, uh. You know, we talked, uh, recently about, uh, the previous calendar year and much, uh, permit totals have increased and revenue from permitting things the right way. Uh, our computer systems. From January first of this calendar year to February twenty-fourth of this calendar year. Uh, we have already issued twenty-one permits total, everything. On solar projects to change of use for commercial buildings, accessory structures, sorts of uh, totaling a little over two thousand revenue. You know, if you look back just a couple of fiscal years, budgets, uh, had maybe a hundred dollars that they were hoping for from, uh, these. So very happy to see the progress. Tom. Sorry, are doing. So keep doing that. If you're doing anything on your property, feel free to give a call. Uh, they they'll walk you through what's necessary. Or tell you that window's the same size you don't. If we I was actually really excited to see that works out that that new online program portal will be coming soon. Uh, dog license. Like that, especially with the new mandates and the new system that has dropped in our website. Issuing a dog license takes a substantial time compared to. Lots of great stuff going on in fire department. Uh, we are happy to say, uh, that all of our positions are currently full. And our two newest tires here earlier this evening, uh, wonderful young men, um, and getting to know them a little bit better and seem great guys, uh, well skilled and knowledge and certification to be had to do those jobs. Uh, we are expecting one retirement in the very near future. Forced to fulfilling that position well, uh, but as Corporal Gerald said, uh, Chief Cody had some serious luck, uh, getting qualified people to apply for those jobs. So I'm hopeful that that will continue. Uh, attached to this report is rec department report. Of course, my expense year-to-date, my revenue year-to-date, uh, code permit summary. Uh, town clerk's office receipts from from a recent time and then fire and ambulance call totals for January. Uh, happy to take any questions. So, the pastor calls.
I told you, man.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just one quick question. When you say borrowed from East Millinocket, did we rent it or did we compensate them in any way or did they just loan us literally?
They are just letting us borrow it, uh, letting us use it while ours is out.
Thank you, East Millinocket.
Any other counselor comment? I will just make mention, um, I noticed under the airport report, um, there's, it says another aircraft now calls Millinocket home, bringing the total to six new aircraft moving here in the last year. Good job, um, the airport and recruiting those and making, uh, uh, the airport so, um, popular. Thank you.
And on top of that, you know, once the taxiway project, it's an obligation to market those eight additional hangar lots, six additional hangar lots, of which we know Jeff already has a list of interested parties in. You know, clearing and building their own hangars on there, uh, to their tax room. Coming up, yeah.
So we can go to the public now for comment on the manager's report. I see on Zoom, Sandra Sullivan. What was your address?
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Um, for the manager, um, the budget meetings, the first three, the public cannot, um, uh, comment on, but are they going to be zoomed so that the public can at least, um, uh, hear what's going on?
Yes, of course.
And Diana will, um, someone be able to come into the town office and get, um, a proposed budget before each of these so that we can keep track of the changes and everything being made and follow what's going on?
Yes, of course. We can, we can do that, uh. Uh, you know, print printing the drafts as we go through, uh, can get using in 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 a public sense, but we will, uh, you know, if we decide not to print them in advance, they will be available uh, in the packets, uh, just like any other agenda information imposed on site.
Okay, thank you. And I also just want to say to, uh, the fire chief, great job. Um, filling all of the, uh, open positions. That's great to see that. And I'm very distressed to see that there's so many openings in the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, um, public comment? On the manager's report?
Cody McEwen, your recreation director. Um, just a note on my recent report regarding the ice rink.
Okay.
Um, the March fifth date that we said, we're going to be Um, the March fifth date that we said, we're going to be closed till, that might change. Um, the weather, you know, whether in Maine, you just need to wait a minute and the forecast is probably going to change. Uh, we do have a, the colder temperatures have come back a little bit. Um, this mild or stretch these past couple of days are kind of hovering around thirty-two or under. We have another snowstorm on the way. So we might do some weekend maintenance to get it open for Monday, Tuesday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Tentatively, um, that's not confirmed by any means. We just have to see what mother nature has in store for us, but, um, we'd like to get it open. For a few more days if possible, and if we do through the month of March, it's going to be probably off schedule. As we can make it happen, but we'll keep people informed on our Facebook page, et cetera, because. It, it's been very busy, so. And then one other note, this Sunday, there will be no open gym at Sterns High School. There will be open gym at Skank High School. Uh, this weekend is the Millenock Hoop Classic, so Sterns is fully booked. Uh, but it's going to be a busy weekend over there. They're going to have, I think it's around thirty or so games, um. A lot registered, so it'll be a busy weekend at the school. Anywho, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your update and thank you for keeping the rink open as long as possible because we know that is very popular in our community. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other community, um, public comment on the manager's report? Back to the council? All right, see you none. We will move along. We have no unfinished business, so we will go into new business. Um, Counselor Higgins, can I have you read order number twenty-four, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, order number twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you. Yes.
It is ordered that the town warrant for, sorry, providing for execution of town warrant for February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that the town warrant for February twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-five in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents is hereby approved.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council of Do May. Do you have any heavy hitters to tell us about?
Yes, we have a few. One thousand thirty-four dollars, that's for allied equipment, that's. Parts for the plow truck. Um, five hundred eighty-one. Ninety-eight, that's ambulance medical billing. That's ambulance billing, five thousand thirty-seven dollars. Bernstein Sawyer, uh, Sir, Sawyer and Nielsen, that's for the TIF legal discussions. Uh, thousand dollars, that's Emery Lee and Sons, that's where they haul the plow truck down to Bangor for repairs. Thirty-nine hundred dollars Harrison Schader Enterprises LLC, that's fire department equipment for the new truck. Eight thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, oil, ten and associates, that's airport design. Three thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollar, uh, dollars and fifty-nine cents industrial protection services LLC. That's the cutter for the fire department. Equipment. Four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents, main municipal association, that's unemployment. Forty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and four cents, main water company, that's the hydrant rentals. Seven thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents, municipal waste solutions, that's waste disposal. Three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents, private oil. As a heating oil for the municipal building, fire department and the transfer station. Three thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and forty-five cents, CB Mar and Engineers Incorporated, that's for the. Brownfield support and that's paid out of the grant. Thirty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, the Pearl Group, that's the window replacement. Uh, fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, that's person power, that's streetlights. One thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifteen cents wastewater, that's the treatment, that's the west for their. Waste for the rec fire department and. Public works.
Thank you. Any council comment on this order? Any public comment? Back to the council for a vote. Uh, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins. How do you vote? Counselor Higgins, can you hear us?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Counsel, Counselor Joma, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Counselor Bragdon and Chair Danforth, I, uh, motion passes six zero. Counselor Higgins, can I have you read order number twenty-five, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, order number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for February twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-five, it is ordered that wastewater warrant for February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Is hereby approved.
Um, motion made by Council Higgins, uh, seconded by Council of Do May. Anything you want to share with us on this order?
Um. Yes, Madam Chair, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, main water company, that's the sewer reeds. One thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-three cents sewer equipment, company of America, that's for parts. Four thousand six hundred and thirty-three doll. Thousand three cents, that's person power.
Thank you. Any council comment on this order? Any public comment? Um, see you done, back to the council, um, for a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins. Counselor Higgins. Still with delay, right? Um, Counsel Joma, Counsel McGowan. And Counsel Bragdon and Chair Danforth, I, motion passes six zero. Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number twenty-six?
Yes. Order number twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, providing for approval of an application for a malt, venus. And spiritual liquor license for the Blue Ox Saloon. It is ordered that the Millenock Town Council approves the attached application for a malt, venus. And spiritual liquor license is hereby approved for Tom St. John, business address sixty-one Penobscot Avenue, Millenock. Doing business as the Blue Ox Saloon, sixty-one Penobscot Avenue, Millenock.
Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counsel McGowan. We will take this to the council, um, for council comments. Before we go to the public. I know we had some supporting documentation, um. That was included with this order. That we're going to want to talk about before we, yeah, before we move forward. Um, first off, we do have a counselor that is missing and she provided, um, Counselor Mackin isn't here. Um, but she asked us to read her, her comments, um, as part of the discussion on this order. Um, she said regarding Blue Ox, I really hate to see a business close, but this bar doesn't deserve the license. I don't know if she, if we can give them some time to improve things. And prove, prove to us that they can run a decent business, but right now I don't think they deserve their license. Submitting that. Her notes for the record. Any other counselor comment? Discussion on this order. Counselor Bragdon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so I have several questions, uh. The first one being is looking at the very next order. Uh, there is attached documents with the police incidents in the past, uh, past year. And reading the email that's attached to it from Corporal Fitzgerald, uh, about the multiple incidences of late with the Blue Ox. Uh, with a couple of charges, the violation for serving underage and some assaults and some of which are still under investigation. And a lot of concerns for many reasons. Uh, but I guess my question first is for the owner. Um, has any steps been made as of yet? To change what has happened in the last year based off what we have here? And then my second question would be, is if there is still items that are under investigation with the state, do we have a timeframe? Or when we'll get a report back on how those came out? Um, Corporal Fitzgerald, I don't know if you know the timeframe on that, it's a little bit faster for you to answer that one or not, but those are my two biggest.
Counselor Bragdon, I think.
Are you talking to me?
Your first question was for, first question was for you, Mr. St. John. Would you just say, would you just say, state your name and your address, please?
Thomas St. John, sixty-one Penobscot.
Thank you.
So the first question was, uh, have you made any changes based off of the incidents that have happened over the last year?
Well, we've made changes obviously through the past thirty years. Something always happens with something that you can never see, but when you see it. You take it under vest and tell them they have to go.
Okay, um, and then the second one is the pending investigations. Are you working with the state? Has the state been working with you on, uh, items that they want to see changed such as that or items that? Uh, they want to happen before, uh, like, are you under any probation with the state, I guess is the biggest question, before you get a liquor license? No, okay. And then I guess it would be for Corporal Fitzgerald, do we have an idea of when these investigations will be concluded?
So. Far as the liquor violations that we, that were reported in the emails, um, all those. Are sent to liquor enforcement by our agency. What they do with them from there is a little different than a criminal charge, like we don't. They go to liquor enforcement and they deal with him on administrative. Um, aspect, I believe the manager may be in contact with him against. As far as, um. The active criminal investigation, obviously, I can't get too much into that, but, um, it was an assault that occurred at the. Um, establishment. And I do know that one of the individuals was transported to the hospital for treatment. And that investigation is still ongoing as far as identifying some of the suspects that were involved.
Oh, it's cool.
Yeah, my biggest question was the first piece, like you mentioned with the liquor violations, uh. Underage liquor violations is my biggest concern, obviously for safety and health reasons.
We did have. Um, in the last couple of weeks, we were at the establishment for unrelated matter, uh, when the officer was there. There was someone in there that was under twenty-one years of age. Which he was asked to leave by the police officer, and the police officer also worked with Mr. St. John as well to, to let him know that. Violation like, or someone underage is in the facility. We cannot say that they were served. Uh, but we can say that, you know, the officer observed him in there, he was told to leave by police and, uh, Mr. St. John was.
Well, they were, they were, they were told. They were told to leave and the female officer told me that there was someone in there and I said, no, there wasn't anyone in there. And she said, yes, it's the son of one of the, of the, uh, officers. And so I thought, well, okay, here we go. So I walked out back by the pool table and there was a gentleman standing there. No drinks, no water, no nothing, because it only happened in a few minutes. And I walked up to him and I said, do you have any ID? And he said, uh, no, I don't. I said, he, I said, he said, but I'm illegal. I said, how old are you? And he said eighteen. I said, well, you can be legal at eighteen. At the Scudic across, uh, the Scudic across the street, but you have to be twenty-one here because it's a lounge license. I said, you gotta go and he left and that was it. And he had nothing. I don't know if he snuck in through the back gate because the back gate has to be opened by law. So I didn't see him come through the front. I never noticed he was there until that lady came and said he was in there and I went, I looked. That was it.
Perfect, thank you.
So that, just for reference, that's not the incident I was referencing, uh, because the incident he's speaking about is one of the ones that we have sent to the state. Uh, it was an incident from just a couple of weeks ago, we were investigating unrelated matter. Found someone that was nineteen years of age in the establishment, um, the police asked him to leave. Told Mr. St. John that he had been in there, but like I said, we can't say that he had been served or just know that he was.
I didn't, I didn't serve anyone there. And when I see someone that's underage, I see it all the time, not all the time, but you see it once in a while and when you do, you tell them to go. And Rosie who works for me and a couple of other girls who have worked for me, they always tell me if they see something that's gone wrong. So that's just how it works. But after thirty years, this is about the most. Interesting thing I suppose I've ever done.
Thank you, um. Thank you for pointing out the email and also the look at on the back of the paper. Which I'm confused about because. I guess this question is for. Corporal Fitzgerald. So some of these are still under investigation, but some are already resolved.
So the assault complaint that is on the email is still under investigation. The license violations have all been submitted to liquor enforcement. Um, for their handling of it. I don't know where liquor enforcement.
And there's some from twenty twenty-three, but on the application on question number fifteen. Where it says, are any violations of main liquor laws in the state? The last five years, the answer is no.
Well, the answer is no, because nothing has been adjudicated, nothing has been shown.
Okay. So with, I know that you're short staffed down, um, just like every other establishment in, like, Millenock. Um, with all of these violations as of late, have you done anything to like, uh, provide, uh, extra staff? Maybe, um. Or the legal term, like a bouncer or somebody that just checks IDs at the door, somebody that handles.
No, but I have my son who was an RN at the nurse at, at the, the hospital and he, uh, comes in and works with me.
And that's his, that's, that's his function?
So he's been a big help. He's got a, he's a, he's having a back operation, so he can't work at the hospital all the time, so he's been helping me out over the last couple of months.
Any other council comment? I, excuse me, just before I go to, um, Counsel Higgins, I'm just wondering, um, have you, um, utilized, um, some of the. Some of the state, um, programs, maybe responsible beverage server training or any of the other programs, like as far as, um. You know, checking IDs and stuff to make it easy so that it become, you do it all the time.
I just got a notice in the mail this last week, but I've gone through it before many times in the past. And anyone who had worked with me, which they're not working now, have gone through it. I'm sure my son will probably go through it because. He'll be taking over when I'm finally finished.
Right.
And, uh. You know, we'll go from there. Rosie will take it again. I know she wants to do.
So they're making good faith effort to keep that up and to, to keep that. To keep that going.
I just noticed the paper today. I got it today. It's starting up now. The program's starting. It's online, I, I believe so. It's a lot easier.
Um, Counsel Higgins.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I've actually got a couple. Um, one of them is to Madam Clerk. I just a question as to why? The. Uh. Incident reports were on the entertainment first and not on the liquor. Just wanted clarification.
Um, they can be attached to either one. Um, I know that the town has authorization. Uh, under the entertainment. To, you know, because it's a town. License and that's why it was attached to that one. I guess if I'm given direction to attach liquor and, and opposed to the town, I get that, a prior practice. It was just requested by former council. To be available.
And, and you know, if I could add, uh. The way I understand it, uh. Liquor license. Uh, council action is, is more of an acknowledgement of, uh, state. Licensing process and the entertainment license is a. Uh, local that supervised by, uh, or set by the council. So. Uh, Diana, do, i- i- am I correct in saying that? Did I say that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's also. Just want to make sure I was.
The town's entertainment, like the mimic of what the, the state statute for me is to follow, so. Really, really need to hear and know there which order it's attached to. The backup to. Both. Will, but the state has authority. Uh, to approve. The license, they are just looking for the council action to do so. Not saying that they will pass it or not pass it, if you pass it or not pass. I don't know that.
So just to follow up on that and just to make sure that we're understanding that. The state looks for the town's stamp of approval for a liquor license before it considers a liquor license at the state level?
That is correct. I, I did have a document, um, I don't have it on. That is correct. I, I did have a document. Um, I don't have it on, or have it on out of the office. Um, but it's regarding where your electronic signatures are um, that you're following. You're, you're signing it as approving the order, and I electronic sign for you um, by the state subsection statute section.
Six five three.
Thank you. That was not correct.
In the email, like.
So you're, you're signing on authorization that you've done your diligence, that they're following all provisions in that.
And from what I understood that when I read it, by signing off as a counselor, we're saying that we understand there's no, there are no incidents, there's no um, illegal activity happening that we're aware of.
Section number two, uh, you'll find the findings.
He uh, I don't know, gave my email. It seems to be stuck on everything that, so. Uh, here. You sent it. Yes. Oh, subsection six fifty-three. Title twenty-eight, eight-five statutes. It would be a certain section of it?
Yeah, if you go down, probably the second piece under findings, number two. That is what you're, you're signing off on, because it starts right off from public hearings, if they're retired, if it is required, um, under the circumstance.
So that would be two findings, uh.
Could read that first.
In granting or denying an application, municipal officers shall a reasons for decision and provide a copy to the applicant. License made tied under more. A G, I think.
And I, I found a printed copy. I found it. So I think it, when it goes down to, um, findings, de-repeated incidences of records of breaches of the peace, disorderly conduct, vandalism, or other violations of the law are in the vicinity of the license premises and caused by persons patronizing or employed by the licensed premising. This is, there's, um. Is that what? Part of what you had sent to me earlier? Right, so there's nothing, right?
But just aware, I, I sent that so you guys are aware, it's the electronic version.
Right.
Because you had to apply electronic. You no longer see that application and documentation form of what you're signing or proving. Uh, so that's kind of on the wayside, so bringing it to your attention of what you're actually signing off on the liquor license. I know it was a councilor concern earlier, so that should answer.
Counselor.
Right. And that, I was just trying to, so we are not issuing the liquor license, we're just that's where I was trying to get the clarification, as far as we're not issuing the liquor license, we are just proving that he can that the state, to the state that he is actually a business in our town, correct? I guess that's where I was trying to get the clarification on.
Your, your, it is a state license, that it's a state application, so it is a state license. That state seeks the municipal government approval, whether it's through a public hearing process or an order process. So you do have the authority to approve it or not approve it. Or also table if there are pending actions that you want to seek at a later date. So you have the authority, but it is still a state license. I just can't confirm nor deny if, if the state pending your denial will follow up with an approval if they find your filings of denying and accept.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Counsel Bragden, yes.
Is there any issue with us tabling this? Uh, his current one expires, correct me if I'm wrong, at the end of March, Brett? So is there any problem with us tabling this until?
Absolutely not. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna wait.
Addressing the question today.
I didn't know if there was any issue of us tabling this till.
Absolutely not. So the state statute for the, for the municipal officers to respond to the request of application is sixty days from stamped date of, of receiving it. So that is March thirtieth, so there's no issue, um, of tabling and coming back. Um, so some concerns to address, and maybe even if the manager wants to take it here to address even, uh, or about contracted form of way.
I think the liquor license runs out the fifteenth, isn't it?
I, the municipal officers have sixty days to respond to your request of the application. I'm not sure when your license because you had supplied and pulled your license. So I'm not sure when your current one expires.
So, you know, manager, and then we need to go to Counselor, um, Pelletier, who has a question.
Under, well, I.
Oh, we're not done with.
Go ahead.
Back to Counselor Higgins.
So, Mr. St. John, I've got a question for you. Um, as far as oh, what, what actions are you going to take? You've already stated that you have, you already made the comment that he might have come in from the backside to get into the bar into your establishment. So what are you going to do to ensure and prevent?
Well, there's nothing that really can be done, because.
Mr. St. John. I haven't finished my question, sir. How are you going to ensure and prevent the consumption and sale of liquor and alcohol to a minor? You, you've already, you've already admitted they've come in through the backside.
Right. Of course I'll do.
How can you assure that to this council?
Well, I've been doing it, but on and off, you know, you, you go out to the back every once in a while and check on things. But if I have an extra person there, which is now my son, he can monitor a lot more closely.
Counsel, Counselor Higgins, are you? Uh, Mr. Manager. Mr. Manager, and then we'll go to, uh, Counsel Pelletier.
You know, I'm, I'm hearing um, concern, uh, you know, given the given the timeline we're looking at, and, uh, the, the severity of the concerns, um, you know, I don't think anyone's intention necessarily to cause a business, not to be able to, especially one that's uh, been alive in our community. Um, I would offer a suggestion to counsel. Uh, you know, from the administrative level, you could consider, um, tabling the uh, these two orders. Um, we do have sixty days from the day it was submitted, however, need uh, again, on March thirteenth, so that's, you know, before the date that, uh, Mr. St. John is, is uh, leaving, as the, you know, license runs out, uh. So you could consider tabling with the expectation that uh, our administrative staff would, um, work with Mr. St. John to, you know, uh, provide a, a, a statement of methods to address the work concerns, uh, that would be signed and acknowledged by Mr. St. John and you know, at the, at the next council meeting, uh, but if, if you know, depending on how the tabling is, is worded, you know, it could be to, uh, you know, file the administration some time to, uh, communicate with Mr. St. John to document a you know, and, and agreed upon process in which, you know, he will, uh, agree to a plan that, that will reassure you that there
Corrective action.
You know, corrective, uh, action, and then, you know, we could come back with his licenses, uh, thirteen for consideration to, uh, that's a feasible option, um, that, that, you know, Diana and I would certainly to cooperate Mr. St. John to to counsel. So.
Thank you for your suggestion. I'm gonna go to Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you, um. If tabling would interrupt his business, I'm not in favor of it. If, uh, tabling it allows us to work with him until uh, the next chance we get to vote on this, then I could agree with that. You know, these charges are not something that, uh, hasn't occurred to other businesses as well over the years. Uh, he is one of the few businesses that keeps his place open daily, three, three sixty-five days a year in this town, uh. Doesn't do a great business at it, not, you know, not like he used to be. Uh, I really hate to see him get hurt in, in that respect, uh. One uh, suggestion I would make is that he, uh, mounts some security cameras so that he can, uh, from the bar, see what's going on in the rest of the area, out back and in, uh, the pool area there. As he just, uh, told us. You know, one person came in there and, uh, never approached the bar, but was just hanging around by the pool table. So uh, that's my feeling on subject, it's, it's, uh, you know, I take him serious that, uh, minors were drinking there, but it's happened at other establishments. Some never get caught at it. So, the, that's my, I would, I don't want to interrupt his business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Pelletier. Counselor Bragden?
Madam Chair, I motion that we table this order and the next order to the March thirteenth meeting to allow time for the Millinocket administration to meet upon St. John to come to a written agreement to solve the council's concerns.
Motion to table made by Counselor Bragden, second. I will provide a second. Motion made by Counselor Bragden, seconded by Counselor, um, Chair Danforth. All those in favor of tabling? Let me read that.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry for the chicken scratch.
Yep. So we're tabling, um, uh, to the March thirteenth meeting to allow time for Millinocket administration and, and Mr. St. John to come to a written agreement to solve the um, council's concerns. We'll take a, a, a vote on the motion to table. How do you vote? Counsel Pelletier?
Nay.
Counselor Higgins? Counsel Higgins, how do you vote on the table order?
I'm gonna say nay.
Counsel Dumea?
Nay.
Counsel McGowan?
Nay.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Aye, yep, and Chair, aye. So, tabling does not pass.
Madam Chair? I'll offer up another table.
Okay.
Let's see that piece of paper that you have written now.
Okay.
Is that loud?
Which has different, he's, you're changing it with different intention, right?
Right, yeah. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table. Table the next two orders, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Table pending the outcomes of the alleged charges until after the investigations are over.
Second.
So, we have a so we have a motion to table. A second motion on, uh, made by Counselor Dumea, seconded by Counselor Bragden.
Now, doesn't it seem a, a lot easier if you just pass this through? And then allow the charges to come to where they come?
So, excuse me, we need to
You can rescind it.
Excuse me, we need to follow through with the, um, with the vote now on the table, um, the motion that's on the table, um, to table the, um, into our March thirteenth meeting.
Not just, it's till the alleged allegations are included, if I'm not mistaken.
That's how it was written, that's how I read it.
No. Which is worse.
All right, I'm sorry. Table pending the outcome of the alleged charges. We need to go to a vote. Counsel Pelletier?
Nay.
Counselor Higgins?
Nay, we've seen too many businesses shut down in this town as it is.
Counsel Dumea?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan?
Nay.
Counsel Bragden?
Aye.
Chair Danforth, nay. Does not pass.
Madam Chair?
Due to four. We have another uh, Counselor, um, Higgins.
I'd like to open up for debate.
Yes. Let's talk about this some more.
Thank you, um. So, w- we're not denying that we've got our concerns. What we're trying to figure out is this Mr. St. John can alleviate some of those concerns, as, as I stated. Our town has lost a lot of businesses over the past several years. Yes, Counsel Pelletier stated that he has, he's given the town, and I can pretty much say a lot of us here have been into that business before and use that establishment. Um, I won't deny that. The the concern from the law enforcement and the stuff that's been turned over and the stuff that we've seen, and we've heard it from other counselors. There is a concern for the underage, underage drinking and serving or even going into the establishment there. Is there something, a way that you can actually convince this council to alleviate the concerns, Mr. St. John, that you will cover both of your exits and entrances? Um, to be able to, that guy. It's like one council suggested, uh, have an, have an abouncer. Second those IDs, so that doesn't happen.
I can cover both of those exits, but it takes a lot of manpower. The easiest way of this whole institution would be for me to go back to a restaurant license, which allows anyone under twenty-one to come in. And that license is six, is fifteen hundred, but I elected to pay twenty-two so I don't have to have someone permanently in the kitchen at all times. There's not enough business in town. And to have someone standing around in the kitchen doing nothing and paying them a high dollar, it just made so much more sense. So the liquor department a long time ago said to me, Tom, why don't you get the twenty-two hundred dollar lounge? So the liquor department a long time ago said to me, Tom, why don't you get the twenty-two hundred dollar lounge license? That way, it's only two dollars extra a month, six hundred dollars more a year, and for that, you can keep people out of the kitchen. And also. The younger characters can come in supervised. And I said, well, that sounded reasonable, and so that's how I got into this. But if I wanted to, if I went back to the fifteen hundred dollar license, we wouldn't even be here. We're having someone that came in that supposedly drank uh underage. Wouldn't even have it. Because they'd be in there, but if they did drink underage, they'd be out because they can't drink anyway. Say now you gotta watch more, you have to watch more so. That's. The state wants to make more money, so they'll let you do it this way. I like the fifteen hundred, I like to save money, but I can't, so I have to do this because I can't keep someone in the kitchen. Someone has to be in the kitchen till nine o'clock at night. That's why this school closes at nine. Because after nine o'clock, they they gotta pay. And they don't wanna do it. So I don't have that, so I get to stay open later because I give them six hundred extra a year, twenty-two hundred dollars. That's how that whole thing plays out. And when somebody comes in there and gets a beer, they sneak something out back, you can't even see it till you're actually out there. And uh it's, well, one of the calls that these guys got, and I know which one it was. Because Officer uh Guy told me. Is that there's a Facebook account. And some girl, there was some guy out there who I've kicked out now and never allowed back in here again. Matter of matter of fact, I've got almost twenty people that are not allowed in. Those years. Because they create problems. So what he did is he bought off of my bartender a drink, and he went out back, way out back by the fireplace. And there was a girl that came in through the alley, and this girl. Didn't like this girl, didn't like the guy going out with her. So he called up, put it on Facebook, next thing I know, the cops are coming down, and they catch the girl. It happened to be Jesse Key, catch the girl. I didn't know, I didn't know that this was going on, this happened within ten seconds, ten 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 minutes. And so now I'm getting a fine over that, and it wasn't anything I did. So that's how this thing works, you've got it, you don't have enough money to keep everybody at a door. It's not like marathon night when you can actually do that. Last night was forty dollars, night before that was fifty. You don't bring enough money in to be able to have people standing around waiting for someone, so you have to. Pretty much surveil the place by yourself, and I've been doing a good job for thirty years and uh. In a fight. Always conducting people out of there, if they're having a problem, I get them to go. So that's where I'm at, and I put cameras in, that's a good idea, but that's another expense. And it's a small town. If we were a bank or a park, it'd be a whole different story.
Counselor Dume.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. I don't think it's even appropriate that we tell a man. Over thirty years in business, like you just said, how to conduct his business, either the man knows his own business or he doesn't. There's a responsibility that's taken when you're a business owner, and those fall under your purview to correct or not correct. If. We're gonna stick our heads in the sand and say that there's not an issue. We're all acknowledging, even the owner, is acknowledging that there are issues. So what are we gonna prioritize? Keeping. To me, it's his responsibility to keep his business open responsibly. So the onus doesn't fall on the council to tell the man how to conduct his business. In my opinion, maybe I'm wrong.
And I don't want adults or younger kids in there, it doesn't make any sense. The older people, they're fine. They they come in, they have a beers, they make them discuss. That's it, we're not dancing, entertainment licenses, I think, basically to have a jukebox.
So either he's willing to take the corrective actions on his own to solve the problems in his business, or. We we take our own responsibility seriously and act on it. That's our two choices, in my opinion. That's all I have for it.
Counsel Bragden.
I think we've heard plenty from the public. I mean, there's not many people in attendance, but I think we should go to public comment. Just to see if anybody has any public comment, then come back to the council. So I would ask that we defer to public comment.
Madam Chair, can I uh just, before that happens, can I offer? Thought from the.
I think. Yes, Mr. Manager.
Um, another method you could consider, uh. You know. Counsel Dume makes a uh fantastic point. Uh, that I have to agree with. Uh, I'm not a decision maker, uh I don't get a vote in any of this, but in a in. Effort to allow this to. Work out naturally, should uh council could. In their uh. Duties um as elected officials. Uh. Take this to vote. Vote to. You know, if it if it passes, you know, maybe it's under the uh. Understanding that that. There will be, you know. Close eye, kind of, you know, ear to the ground uh. Over the next year, um uh, you know. Listening for these sorts of instances and and charges and whatnot. Uh, and and an understanding that if there's, you know, a continuation uh. Or or multiple things or an increase uh here that. Uh. So an understanding that the council may not pass it the next. Uh. Or it could be brought to a vote and they voted down. Um. But but I. I I think that. Counselor. Uh, Dume makes a really good point, uh. It's not the administration council's. Purview necessarily direct a bit zone into how they should be running business, whether or not, you know, they should. Found two hundred. Town. Uh. So. Just recap there. Uh. Recommendation from administration to either. Take it to vote, if votes fails, take it to vote, if votes passes, you know, understanding that. By the time this comes from. This year. See.
Madam Chair, can I can I offer to read a portion of the ordinance for the entertainment license that I think that will be. Good information for this council and the public.
You are still in. A.
I'm asking for.
So um. I'll grant you permission, so this is the entertainment, we're talking about the liquor license, not the entertainment license, so you just make that differentiate.
Absolutely.
Okay, please do.
So, on the ordinance for the entertainment license that's attached, that we're kind of referencing both of these, but yes, this is pertaining to the entertainment license. There is, and I assume. I don't have it in front of me, but in ordinance for. The order number twenty-six, that would be similar. So, uh, section sixty-five eight, suspension or revocation of permit. The municipal office may suspend or revoke a special amusement permit. Which was issued under the chapter, if the permit holder is in violation of any of these provisions of this chapter or has knowingly made incorrect statements. Of the material nature on the application. Determination of the severity of the violation, of whether the suspension or revocation is warranted shall be made by the municipal officers. After a public hearing is preceded by notice. I say that only to say this. That even if it passes, even if you vote on it tonight and it passes, there's still opportunity if there's. More violations to suspend or revoke at the will of the council. So no matter what the decision is here tonight, there's always provisions in here to suspend or revoke. I just offer that.
Thank you, Counselor Dume. Other council comment while we're in debate over this? Any comments? Way in?
Sure, I will.
Yes, Counsel McGowan.
Well, I can, after listening to everybody, I tend to agree with. Counselor Dume and the manager. In that it's not our job to tell him how to run his business. And that if it. As Counselor Dume said, we always have the option of revoking the license. I. Would hate to see anybody who's been in business years. Although there are concerns, and I will say I would like to see things improved, but as a concern that there are people underage drinking. That I'd like to see you be more diligent and not have any more issues in the future. I would be inclined to uh vote to pass it today. Um. With the stipulation that if there are more violations in the future, my future vote would be no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McGowan. So as Counsel Bragden suggested, um, take it to the public, fun without. Yes. And is that just a statement that we're coming out of a debate?
Yes.
Need your purposes, thank you, thank you. Um, so we have come out of debate and we will go to um the public um on Zoom. Sullivan.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Um, all I'm hearing is blame on the business owner. I'm sorry, I think blame can't be placed solely on the business owner. Um. If you're eighteen, you're old enough to know you're not supposed to be in there. And. It need blame also needs to be put on. The kids going in there. I'm seventy-nine years old, this isn't something new. Kids were going in to bars when I was seventeen and eighteen too. By now. Mr. Saint John knows how to run his business. You gotta concentrate on. Providing something for the kids to do, so they're not going in there. Thank you.
Let me say.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Let me say something, I'm seventy-eight, it'll be seventy-nine in a few months. And I know what it's all about out there, and I never let any underage people come in and have alcohol. The only types that happen to sneak through the cracks, get it from someone else and they're they fault, and when I catch them, they're gone. And that's just the way it is, so the way it's always been. Nothing changes.
Is there any other public comment? Mr. Saint John, we have somebody in public that would like to come up to the podium.
Maybe.
Yes.
Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. This has been a big, big decision for you guys in that, and we've talked about the owner, but we also. You know, we've got a responsibility for the business, but we also have the responsibility for this town and its residents for their safety. And with all these incidents going on, like I said, if we pass, if you pass this. And the state turns around after. Mr. C- Councilman Duma said. That the investigation shows they're gonna pull his license anyway. If the state does that. But for the town, the responsibility of yours, are we liable? As we're passing this, let's say next week. An incident happens again and somebody gets hurt or killed. You know, we're we're looking at small issue, but it is a big issue because when people get. Drinking and that, things happen, and the owners have a hard time dealing with it, I see that. But the but the biggest thing is the liability of this town, are we gonna, like I said. Businesses have come and gone, we we've heard it before, businesses done this. We had a business forty years that went down drain because of what happened with the council. So, no matter what you vote, we lose, if the state turns around and doesn't revoke his license. Excuse me. Uh. We ain't got no choice, they're gonna they're gonna close because. There's no way they can run without a state license. But I'm looking at the safety of the town. Repeated incidents in that. If it's gonna happen, like I said, you have to take precaution, like you said, put cams up, put this up. That's not gonna help because it it happens, but I'm just worried about the incidents like. The color, like uh Councilman Duma said. Let's wait and see what happens with these investigations because we might not even have to vote because the state might revoke this. If he gets into more trouble. It's gonna happen, so, like I said, I don't like to see a business lose, but we also gotta take. The residents and the safety of this town, thank you.
Yes, Madam Fear, uh Mad- Madam Clerk, yes.
If if I may just respond to Scott, um, actually surveillance will help, especially in the investigation process. Right now, if there is no cameras in that place and there is an investigation process, there is no solid evidence of what is going on. So, an investigation from the state liquor license that uh department. It's passed over from. Uh. The law enforcement with surveillance, uh there is no uh. No way of of a, he said, she said, drinking underage and not drinking or serving, so. Uh, just. My uh observation on what other cities and towns have passed for ordinance, then. You should back in addressing. Are. Aggressive.
Yes, I'm Mr. Manager.
Just had, oh, um, I just want.
Yeah.
You love it when I clarify, I just wanted to to um answer uh Mr. Levitt's question. Tell the town.
Be liable.
Any of those. Uh. You know, charges or or if anything were to happen uh at the. Town uh. Passing. The license.
So Saint John, you back up because you wanna make some more public comment, or you're just in case we.
Call for vote. Call for vote.
Um, yeah. No, I heard. No, no, I heard that, I wanna, I um. I wanna make a comment, we didn't have a second for call the vote, so I can still discuss. But you can see that this um. Is being very concerning, this topic, um, the 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 conversation, the debate we've had here, we are very, very concerned. Um, about um. Some of the incidents that's happened, you know, uh under the establishment, and I think that you've heard that we um, I think. We need to see less of that, none of that, that's our biggest concern is the public safety, and so um we're interested in um. Perhaps corrective action changes that you might be able, that you can do um to reduce that in the future, so um. We've talked a lot, and we've had call for a vote.
I would second that.
And we will second that, so we will now um vote on order number twenty-six as it is written um. Counselor. Who do I look at now, sorry, Counsel Pelletier, how do you vote on order number twenty-six?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dume.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Counsel Bragden.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, nay. The motion does not pass. Hi, three zeros, three to three, three, three. So at this time, the motion doesn't pass, um. Does not mean it can't come back to the council at another time.
So it'll be the thirteenth.
Sure, you can get it done, up to you. You set the agenda.
To be de- to be determined. We need.
So I. If it not, I have. Deny that. Both have.
Okay. We will now go on to orders. So I guess um. Point of clarity, do we go to order number twenty-seven, or do we? Okay.
I'm all set.
So you're all set for tonight? So you're all set for tonight? Yes. Um, let me find. Counselor McGowan, can I have you read order number twenty seven? Yes.
Yes, order number twenty seven dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for the Blue Hawk Saloon. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved for Thomas St. John, business address sixty one Penobscot Avenue, Melanocke. Doing business as the Blue Hawk sixty one Penobscot Avenue, Melanocke.
A motion made by, uh, Council McGowan, seconded by Council Dume. Council comment on this order. Uh, Counselor Higgins.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to motion to, to amend. This order.
Let's hear your amendment.
Hey, yes, Adam Chair, like to amend it to be read as. It is ordered. That the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved with. The following. So. That the Blue Hawk Saloon is given notice that if they are involved in another incident or another violation by law enforcement and that. That the town will seek and or revoke said entertainment license following the procedure. Following the procedure written in the town charter, chapter.
So, um. So Counselor Higgins, um, you're breaking out, but I also want port of clarity at, at this point, um, what you're suggesting is moot at this point because the last order did not pass. Am I incorrect? It's my other counselors.
Well, he's limiting the entertainment license of the liquor license. But regardless of that, this is redundant because there's already an ordinance in our ordinance book that states that we can do that at any time, like where Council Dume said. So it's, it's kind of a moot point at this point. Right, because there's already an ordinance. Yeah.
And, 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 you know, the entertainment license. Sorry, the entertainment license, uh, is more so. You know, to, uh. Meeting the, the guidelines of, uh, Fire Marshal's Office for, uh, allowing dancing. So. Uh, has to do. Serving of alcohol, uh. He has jukebox, he has, you know, uh, some music in there. I say a band, uh, that's people are allowed to dance with. The entertain. I am told I'm just speaking. I, I, I will always admit I'm.
Paul Malcolm, seventy three School Street Code Enforcement Officer. The entertainment license is so he can have a jukebox in there. No live music or dancing unless he goes through the Fire Marshal's Office for a dance license. That's a whole different avenue that he has to go down. Right now, all he can have is a jukebox or something to that equivalent, DJ or. We can't have any, anybody singing or a band or allow dancing. Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, hey Noah, that's good. I was halfway there.
Uh, if I may.
Yes, yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Tom, which a Fire Marshal's license for a dance is through the state, not the town, that the town's entertainment.
Correct.
Thank you.
So Counselor Higgins, how do you feel? Do you want to proceed with an amendment or are you comfortable just going ahead and voting on the order as is?
So. I was trying to solve the whole thing.
I can't.
You're never gonna do that on your own.
I know. I don't think it needed an amendment because if we're of the mind that they have another, uh. Incident that we, we would revoke, that's already allowed to do that. You don't have to amend this order to do that.
I was trying to get it put on notice, so it's actually written in there.
Counselor Pelletier, you've turned your lights. Oh, hey. Just wanted to make sure we're.
Right. Um.
So we're going to be approving this as or not. So this is just so he can, we're, we're saying that he can have a jukebox in his business.
Sure.
So that's what the, uh, entertainment license is saying.
Yes. Yeah. The vote's been called, so we're gonna go to vote on order number twenty seven. Um, Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote on the entertainment license?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye, jukebox.
Counsel Dume. Council McGowan.
Aye.
Uh, Council Braggden, Chair Danforth, aye, the pass is six zero. Um, Counselor Braggden, can I have you read order number twenty eight?
Order number twenty eight dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of an application for a special event, malt, venus and spirit choice liquor license for the Royal Theater. It is ordered that the Melanocke Town Council approves the attached application for a special event, malt, venus and spirits choice liquor license is hereby approved for. Mister Randy D. Jackson, business address two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Melanocke, doing business as Royal Theater, two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Melanocke.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Braggden, seconded by Council McGowan, council comment on this order. Any public comment on this order?
Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. I was just looking, uh, as the Blue Oxes. They're an incident.
There's.
At the Boral Theater because it says here that the incidents of the following businesses, is that just incorrect or?
Um, there's.
Read on the last page. Read on the bottom, so.
Oh, we have no, we have zero incidences.
Okay.
Zero. Yeah.
Okay, I was just looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, no problem. All right. Let's go back to the council vote on order number twenty eight. Um, Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
How do you, how do you vote? Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
What? Did you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Dume, Council McGowan, Counselor Braggden and Chair Danforth, aye, this pass is six zero. Uh, Counselor Dume, can I have you read order number twenty nine?
Yes, Madam Chair, order number twenty nine dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval for the application for entertainment license for Boreal Theater. It is ordered that the attached application for entertainment license is hereby approved for. Randy Jackson, business address two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Melanocke, doing business as Boreal Theater, two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Melanocke.
Uh, motion made, Counsel Dume, seconded by Counselor Braggden, council comment on this order. Uh, Counselor Higgins.
Yes, Madam Chair, can I get clarification on this? From the code enforcement, how does this fall into the entertainment license?
Yeah, hold on for, come into the mic.
Jukebox.
It says for an outside license for his theater to have a bar outside. He can have a band out there. He, he has the same thing, only he doesn't have a dance floor. So if he has entertainers, it's just in, inside without any dancing going on. So he's allowed to do that.
Thank you.
Adam Chair.
All right.
Adam Fair.
Yes.
And entertainment is beyond just a box. It, it is for, it. I. It is for. Play, show, skit, film, dance or exhibition or entertainment performed for any audience. So it's beyond jukebox.
It is.
It isn't just, just because it doesn't say, no, whatever your form of entertainment and excitement is. It's for that purpose. So it's, he does, he does need this beyond this liquor license. His actually is coming up in March for expiration. So he filed them both together to be ahead of the game. Very good. So he does hold acts and plays and stuff in his establishment all the time.
Any other council comment on this order? Any public comment on this order? See, and then we're gonna come back to the council for a vote. Uh, Counsel Pelletier, how do you vote? Counsel Pelletier, you're on mute.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Uh, Counsel Dume.
Aye.
Council McGowan, Council Braggden, Chair Danforth, aye, uh, passes six zero. We now are on reports and communications warrant committee, uh, for March thirteenth, council meeting, Council McGowan and Council Pelletier. Does that work?
Aye.
Aye, very good. All right, yeah.
Aye.
Yeah. Under Chair Committee Reports, uh, we have a March eleventh, uh, is the next age friendly meeting at two P M. At the library. I'll get, um, notice out about that. I don't think there's anything else. This is our chair committee. We'll.
Yeah.
And do we have, um, Counselor Braggden?
Just wanted to remind you particularly about that. I mentioned last time. I know it wasn't gonna hit this meeting, but I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so noted. Now we are in a two minute public comment. No debates.
Uh, keep it real short and sweet.
Thank you.
You're recreation director. Um, it wasn't in my report, but it's happened twice since my report. We've had a snow sled go down, uh, Main Street. Uh, so, um, it's, it was something that was gonna be for another time, uh, but I'll lightly bring that up just because it's happened twice already. Um, in recent conversation last week, um, I was wondering about the snowmobile trail routes that we passed as a council and our town clerk. Um, did some digging and we never officially. Designated those in the way that our ATV trails were. Um, it's actually separate. There's a lot more in town trail. Routes that are designated as ATV lanes. Um, one of those streets, Bowden Street I live on. Um, it's not actually designated as a municipal snowmobile trail. Um, but this isn't more so. Something to start really calling out all the streets and stuff that, you know, snowmobiles do travel on when they shouldn't. Um, that law enforcement has intervened on, that the rec department has intervened on. We can't do much other than just state that you can't be there. We can't actually do any. Uh, law enforcement in those areas. Um, but it is state law that, um, you need to trailer your sled if you're not within five hundred yards of a designated snowmobile trail. Um, granted by the state or and or, uh, a municipal designated snowmobile trail that can only be done via the government. Um, via council action. Um, since then, um, John Raymond, uh, president of the Northern Timber Cruiser Snowmobile ATV Club. Um, did draft the trails that have been designated over time, um, Bates Street, um, the downtown. Through the Kermit access into Veterans Park, um, and as well, the one that comes through our rec complex. There's an easement through our rec road that we let them pass through. And then they continue along towards the mystery trail and then up through Central Street, the corridor typically people will see them, um, driving on. I think as we head into next season, um, we're about. Done here or wrapping things up within the next month. Um, we could have one heck of a march of snow. Um. But it's one of those things where we really should start looking at some of the routes that people are naturally using.
Yeah.
And how we might be able to accommodate and or adapt. What we currently have as legislation for the community regarding access. Um, there's been quite some commentary over that for many years.
Right.
Um, we now have a baseline that's been recently shared and I think this town clerk as well, um, for getting that communication out. Um. And a few of you in here, uh, these, this stuff got inside. I'm not sure that the council may have been also privy to that information that has been sent yet, or maybe that will be. Your way soon. Uh, but just something to think about as it's like you can't stop the ocean waves, but maybe we can find a way to. Make it work for most people. Uh, with that, there's still a lot of, um. How, how, what's, what's the right word? Uh, law breaking. I don't wanna make it as fierce as that because crime, crime. Um, but you know, because it, it is a confusing mix where we have those trails, ATV that intersect over that same path, but legally. Um, there is a separation right now and something at the track, just so you know, our rec complex road, there is no snowmobiling. It's town ordinance that there is no snowmobiling on recreation property. We provide one easement and that is the road crossing from behind the fields. Um, and it's abused a lot. And we don't have the legal authority to do much about it, um, other than to advise and inform. Our law enforcement that it's happening and they, they are enforcing that. Um, but it's one of those things where. When it's so casual, it becomes an impossible enforcement issue. So I think it was a little bit long.
That was a little bit long.
And I'm sorry, but, um, it, it is important and it will be coming up in the future.
And I, and I appreciate you bringing it back up because I've been sitting up here before and it, we've had discussions that we need to like make it known, a lot of communication and education. What are the snowmobile routes and where can they be? And I know working with, um, John, uh, John Raymond and stuff and getting that communication out, we can work on that. So we'll just have to get ahead of the, uh, ahead of the snow next year and get some communication. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I will, any, any other public comment? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Council Braggden, seconded by Council McGowan, uh, to adjourn. How do you vote, Counselor, uh, Pelletier?
Aye.
Counsel Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dume.
Aye.
Uh, Council McGowan.
Aye.
Counsel Braggden. Chair Danforth, six zero, we are here at twenty.
Say. Couldn't take care.
Confirmation on the adjournment.